Down to announcements. Campaign announcement, so. Yeah, you just need all this, uh, enough to apply the, uh, work session, I think. A few minutes. Got back on the call, said over thirty people on, uh, your information, um, that's your floor, Slater? The recorder, Mr. Leonard, both. So it's. Hey, did you hear what I said, Honorable Pubgate?
Uh, now I can hear, uh, before that, the sound was very low.
Yeah, okay. We make some adjustments, uh, for the record, Honorable Vice Chair Slater, Carl Slater and our, um, legislative services, uh, staff, Mr. Leonard Moos, myself, we're in the B and F conference room. And if one of, if any of the staff would like to come and appear in person, uh, it would be, I think, with C D C guidelines.
Good morning.
We have, uh, how many, how many is it that that's allowed, Mr. Moos? Six staff could come in and, and be in the, uh, conference room with us, just so choose. Um, at this time, I'd like to, uh, go to item number two, recognize guests and visiting officials.
Good morning, Chair Committee Members, this is Michelle Morris, let us say that that's for Department of Health, I'm on the line.
Anybody else want to introduce themselves?
Good morning, Chair, this is Dr. Jim with the Department of Health.
Morning.
Good morning, this is Thomas C. To Woody with D P M, good morning, um, members of Hess Committee.
Morning, um, Hesse, Joseph Polaty with E M S. Um, I'll be here for any questions, uh, if Jill Jim needs to address the transition, uh, for E M S to D O H, thank you.
Uh, good morning. Uh, this is Jermaine Jones Deputy Contracting Officer, um, with O M B Contracts Grant Section, here to answer any questions, thank you.
Good morning, this is Michelle Begay Nakai, Attorney at Navajo Nation Department of Justice. I'm here with, uh, N D O H.
Good morning, this is Marlinda with Division of Social Services, and we also have some other team members on the line, thank you.
Good morning, this is Deanna Nesswood Ishii, Division of Social Services, Executive Director, thank you.
Good morning, and this is Chris Cascoli, Department Manager with E M S.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the committee, this is Rosalind Begay with Division of Social Services, good morning.
Good morning, honorable members of the Health Education and Human Services Committee, this is Racy Tattati with the Department of Personnel Management, thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Ron Duncan from Butter Records.
Good morning, members, this is, uh, Profilia, Division Director, Division of Human Resources, yeah, they've been.
Okay, let's move on, if there's nobody else, uh, wanting to acknowledge they're on the call. Miss, uh, Angelica Benali. To review the agenda with the committee as well as all the folks on the call.
Yes, Mr. Chair, good morning again, uh, Mr. Chair and members of the, uh, Health Education Human Services Committee, and just a reminder, Mr. Chair, that there is a Navajo Work Session at, that's scheduled at one o'clock today. Okay, you have your proposed agenda at the Health Education Human Services Committee, twenty-fourth Navajo Nation Council Work Session, June sixth, twenty twenty-two at nine A M, presiding the Honorable Daniel Esso Chairperson, Honorable Carl R. Slater Vice Chairperson, he had telecommunications, Wind Rock Navajo Nation, Arizona. One call work session to order will call invocation announcements to recognize guests and visiting officials, three, review agenda, four, work session reports, it's regarding the program transfers to align with divisions or departments' plan of operations. A is the Navajo Department of Health and the Navajo Division of Public Safety. One is the Emergency Medical Services, and it's, uh, the plan is to transfer to the Navajo Department of Health. B is the Department of Health and Navajo Division of Social Services. One is a Navajo Treatment Center for Children and Their Families Program. And the plan is to transfer that particular program to the, uh, under the Navajo Department of Health. C is the Division of Public Safety and the Department of Personnel Management, and it's regarding the criminal and civil, uh, and traffic background investigations. One is Information Management System, Section with D P S. And what their, and it describes what their function, uh, is, and that's Navajo Nation Criminal Traffic History Record for non-criminal justice purposes, and there is a fee charge. C is the background, Office of Background Investigations, D P M. O B I is the Lead Agency for Navajo Nation for the Oversight and Maintenance of the Minimum Standards of Character that meet or exceed federal, state, tribal, and local requirements. It provides investigative adjudicative services, including but not limited to verification searches, character reference, civil searches, fingerprinting services, criminal record search, searches, uh, credit, credit checks, program-specific searches, and employment suitability. And they also, uh, conduct fingerprinting with the background investigation services and verification. Three is the coordination of background checks of Navajo Nation personnel and school board members, uh, under D H R. And that would pertain to the Department of Education, along with the Bureau of Indian Education, and there would be a coordination between the two agencies. D is the Division of Social Services. Current financial viability of the following Division of Social Services, uh, Pro, uh, Departments and Programs. One, the Department of Family Services, proposed transfer to the Developmental Disabilities Program, D T P, to the Department of Family Services. Two is the Department of Self-Reliance, proposed transfer of the Navajo Family Assistance Services from the Department of Self-Reliance to become a standalone program. Three, Navajo Family Assistance Services, proposed establishment of the N F A S as a standalone program. Four is D S S Federal Contracts Reverted Funds to the Federal Government, covering the previous five years, including six thirty-eight contracts, not fully, uh, used to benefit the Navajo Nation. It also includes the federal fund reversions from F Y, uh, twenty sixteen to F Y twenty twenty-one. Recommendations is to comprehensively streamline excess or, and/or unspent financial balances. Also is to, in the initiatives to disperse contracts and grant funds in a timely manner. And the next bullet point is to update the tri-state agreement negotiations with New Mexico, Arizona, and Navajo Nation. And five is close of work session announcements and adjournment, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Benali. Committee members, any thoughts that we did, we do have, interrupting our scheduled work session with a N A B meeting at one P M. But we will have to pare down the agenda to cover, um, I guess, two hours work session. Chair. Uh, Phil, Honorable Vice Chair Slater?
Uh, Chair, um, my recommendation would be to make D the new C because item B has N D O H and Social Services, and I think it would be more harmonious to have Social Services continue right after the first part of their presentation. And then, since C is a would you say, discrete set of entities and topics, uh, in the event that we do need to defer it that way, instead of bringing back someone who we already had to speak at the beginning. So that'd be my recommendation.
E is the new C. Uh, with that recommendation, so that part about background checks may, might have to be continued on a different day. Remind the committee that we have a regular meeting on Wednesday also. So we could put the, the background checks as a report at that point in time, because we did ask, uh, Chief Legislative Counsel to, uh, provide some guidance in how perhaps, uh, Navajo Nation Code could be amended to address all the matters. And put it into one legislation. Any members with that? Let's proceed. Uh, work, uh, work session reports, uh, for A, Department of Health and Navajo Division of Public Safety. We do have Mr., uh, what was it? We do have staff from Emergency Medical Services. And I don't know if we have Mr. Jesse Delbar on the call, we do have Dr. Jill Jim. Okay, Dr. Jim, let's start with your presentation on the transfer of E M S to the Department of Health.
Oh, yeah, I have been, um, Dr. Jill Demin Seattle, and Executive Director for the Navajo Department of Health. Uh, thank you for, um, allowing us to speak on the item today regarding the transfer of the Navajo, um, Emergency Medical Services to the department. We are modifying our plan of operations, so, um, these changes that we're talking about today will be included in our Plan of Operation Proposal, which is currently in the one sixty-four process. The Navajo Department of Health oversees, um, comprehensive healthcare services for the Navajo Nation, and um, during the pandemic, I believe, we played a large role in ensuring that we, uh, provided services and coordinated services um, across the Navajo Nation, including working with health facilities and, um, frontline workers. And I would say that many of our staff, including C H Rs and, um, E M S are frontline work, are, are frontline workers and continue to be in our ongoing response to the pandemic. And we had started having these conversations, um, just in relation to the Title One and Title to Title Five, um, from self-determination to self-governance for the Indian Health Service, um, contracts that we have. And, um, under the, under those contracts, the Department of Health and E M S has separate contracts that we, um, negotiate with the Navajo Area Office every year. And I think, um, these are sort of in relation to what I'm talking about, not only streamlining services and clinical services on, um, the assumed services that we have from the area office to the Navajo Nation government. So as I'm talking about some of the, the key important, I guess, influences of these decisions is, um, consolidating our contract with the Navajo Area Office, and, um, if we do that, to some extent, we do have the flexibility to support um, with programs within these contracts, and I think that's one benefit. Instead of having three separate contracts, there's sort of that, um, streamlining of negotiating with, um, the Navajo Area Offices on, on how that government-to-government, um, contracting process goes between Navajo Area Office and the Indian Health Service. Um, also, um, we do have a Division of Public Health Services, and I think, well, not I think, there is a lot of, um, services I, that complement each other in the department, that we see a lot of potential. Um, currently, um, I don't, um, think that we, we can still accomplish those within the structures of where we're at, but I think it makes sense to, um, combine and, and merge and, and this program into the department, not only because, um, that they think they, the program will benefit not only, um, for the reasons of just focusing on health delivery services. And I believe the transfer from the E M S, from Division of Public Health Safety to N D O Hs will not impact any other existing services, and they can explain that process, but, um, I believe, under this, um, transition to the department, um, one, not only will E M S, um, continue to expand, and I, I, I believe that there is a lot of um, growth opportunity that we have just providing clinical services. Under the Division of Public Health Services, we are continuing to look at, um, hiring a physician. I know people have talked about this previously, looking at having a Navajo Surgeon General, sort of, um, and that's still in the works. And so, we do a lot of prevention, and we do, um, a lot of outreach and, um, preventing of health, health diseases and health conditions, but also um, looking at sort of treatment and management to the extent that we can. But under, um, this Division of Public Health Services, I am looking at reorganizing not only the, the programs that are just focusing on prevention, but programs that are focusing on clinical, sort of, um, aspects that we have. On these programs that I'm talking about clinically related, we are already situated in health facilities, and I think we can, um, expand those, for example, um, public health nursing, we have one in Kiento. And I know that, um, C H Rs are also located, um, in, um, health facilities and health educators as well. And so these are sort of those opportunities where, um, the program can cross collaborate and train. I think that was sort of the intention a long time ago, is to have E M S train, um, a lot of the health professionals and staffing to extend our capabilities to do that. And so, um, with E M S, I think there's sort of that, um, model that I think we can grow into and build on. I know there are conversations about how, um, the C H R program can, um, can expand. And I know we had redesigned positions to kind of lower their credentials to expand, but once those individuals are done with their internship, um, positions, I hope that we can continue to um, enhance their skills to get certified at various levels and be billable. I think the goal of, um, a lot of the services that we're offering are currently not billable, but E M S has, um, provided billable service, uh, billable services and has the, um, capability to do that. But I think both Pro, um, E M S and D O Hs can continue to find ways to, um, find a finance system that's reimbursable across three states, and I know with your help, we have done that with, um, the Division of Behavioral and Mental Health Services. But I think what we're now looking at is, um, sort of those services that were, are being offered in the community and through health facilities, and I think that's sort of around the, um, the recognition of being self, um, self-determination, moving to self-governance. And we did submit that application, um, and we did receive results back from those, and we were not able to get the grant, but um, doesn't mean that stops us from pursuing, um, the self-governance of our contract. And in that resolution, we did include all three programs. Um, and one of the, um, issues around going from self-governance to self, our self-determination to self-governance is just looking at our, and um, what our financial audits are and how we need to fix that, that's just not the Department of Health, that's the whole Navajo Nation system, so we can certainly provide an update once we get clear, um, recommendations from Indian Health Service, um, once we make that communication. But, um, those are, um, just a summary of where I'm at, um, with the, um, seeking this transfer and it, and if E M S, I know Chris Cascoli is on the line, and, um, staff are on the line as well, so they can um, sort of, um, give, um, any additional comments, so I will end there, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Jim, um, Mr. Chris Cascoli. I'm sorry, I didn't, uh, recall your name, I could not read my own writing, but I found your name. Uh, please address the committee on this proposed transfer. And your thoughts and recommendations. Hmm, what other, provide us what other area of support you would need. Moving from public safety to the Department of Health. You probably have good communication connections with fire department as well as, uh, public safety for police state. Can you give us, uh, your thoughts, perhaps an overview, and then some recommendations?
Uh, ye- yes, certainly, and, uh, good morning, um, Chairman So and members of the Hess Committee, and everyone on the call. Um, and good, good morning again, uh, um, Shay, Chris Cascoli, and she, um, actually, and she won't question, let's just chain. Not okay, then add the should change, although, um, toward a changing, because you know. Uh, currently, I'm the, uh, Department Manager overseeing Emergency Medical Services. And we, we've been having a lot of these discussions, um, on this transition. Um, and most of this has led to, um, the, um, position that the, the department is currently in, um, in terms of, of clinical services, and currently, we feel that the, uh, move would allow us to further expand and collaborate and coordinate our, uh, services provided, um, in, in the clinical aspect. Currently, right now, we, we do have a contracted medical director that provides, uh, clinical oversight. And, uh, a lot of these models that, um, that, that we're trying to create here is, is models that you see in a lot of the, the, the urban or the, um, uh, state systems where uh, E M S functions, um, under the, under a Department of Health, uh, in this case, the, the Navajo Department of Health. Um, where we share the same commonalities, some of the same challenges, and I think we learned this from, from the pandemic, uh, when it came to ground transportation of, um, of patients, and, and I, and, and the department, uh, or E M S, um, really feels that, that this, this, this recommendation of a transition, um, would further benefit, um, not just commonalities, um, but also a, a structure uh, for our contract, our six thirty-eight contract. And I, I think that we can, not, not to repeat a lot of what Dr. Jim said, but, um, just to add that, I, I think that we can continue to work together, uh, to expand, um, a lot of, excuse me, a lot of the services that, that both the D O H and, and E M S can, can provide, and really be able to share, um, uh, not just the workforce, but also to share a lot of the, the clinical, uh, activities that, um, uh, for the service delivery that, that we provide to, to the nation. And, um, I, I don't feel that, that there, there is necessarily going to be a separation, uh, between our law enforcement partners or fire department, I think every day, we continue to work with them and, and, and work well, um, in many parts of, of that. Um, so I, I think that departure, um, will, will not necessarily separate, you know, our, our services, it just, it'll just, um, you know, really put us under another umbrella, but, um, I think our, our public safety partners, fire, E M, uh, fire, law enforcement, corrections, emergency management, I think we, we have a good relationship that will be able to continue uh, and still providing that collaboration, so, um, that's all I have at this point, Chair, unless there's any, uh, specific questions, thank you.
The white button, okay, that's unmute, Chair, last, it's Phil. Chair, last, it's silly. It's cool. To share tender kindness to them. So thank you for that clear presentation. We do realize that EMS is growing and. While you were. Talking, then how could then we. In the merging of. The Division of Mental and Behavioral Health. And Emergency Medical Services and the other allied services. If then we look at expanding. Facilities. So that would be something. That would be part of the consideration. But thank you. Committee members, do you have any questions? Honorable Vice Chair Slater.
Thank you. First question is, was there a written report or. Adjusted language or anything like that sent out? And then second, conceptually, I agree with this and I think that. Needed as we move toward the. Compacting and contracting, having all of the health programs or IHS funded programs. Having that whole system integrated, I think is going to be. With that process. And Dr. Jim, if you're still listening, I'm sure you are. I think we need to have you and DOJ come back before the committee and see where that process is at right now. Forget the legislation number, but the authorization to investigate the compacting and contracting. So. That said, I think it's a good idea. Really appreciate the work of the program and I just want to see some more specifics in writing and if you can point me to an email or send one with. A little more. Depth and detail. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Good point. Vice Chair Slater on the getting update on that planning grant. We'd like to see it move forward quickly. Committee members, anybody else?
Chair, Chair Wanika.
Hey, Fatsilla. Edison, we, Wanika got on the call. You have the floor, Fatsilla.
Here, Chair and members of the committee. I'm on travel, so I don't know if I can stay with you. Most of the meetings. Are going to be off and on, I guess, in this respect, but. I'm concerned about all these transfers. I don't know if Chad or Beta is on the line because. I did a legis, I was doing a legislation to transfer another program. Having to do with EPA. And there was concerns from the Justice Department. And I wanted Chad to kind of give us an update on that. The reason why I'm concerned about that, I think the timing is not good to make all these transfers. We don't know if this is going to be a new administration and it's getting close to the end of this administration. It's going to either be the. Either be the end or it's going to continue. And that's a concern that I have. If there's a change, I hate to see another change again with a new administration. It would have been better if this, these changes were made. Towards the beginning of this administration so that we would know how effective these changes are. Okay, yes, it is. And then another concern I have is. I know when I was on the board with forty five's hospital. The board and the administrators wanted to go six thirty eight. And I was the only one that was against that because. It's usually the department heads and the people that actually do the work. And I went and talked to a lot of the employees and they were against it. They were not involved as far as the planning of going to six thirty eight. And it took a while for them to get used to, but they were almost forced to go to. A different type of a process. And I hate to see this and. The chair asked that if there was going to be any employees there, I would rather see this. I hope. This information was provided to the employees and those people that work directly with the programs are going to be transferred. The department heads and the leaders that do this. But people that actually work with the programs, they sometimes they're not informed until afterwards. Even right now at this particular meeting also. It seems that we're going to be rushing with this, with this. Presentations because at one o'clock, we're going to be switching to a meeting. I don't know, maybe we need to address this another time or whatever, but I'm glad it's just a work session. We don't have to make any decisions today. But with me, I'd like to contact some of the programs that's going to be transferred if they're in agreement with this. I know the program, the department heads are probably there and they might be the only ones that were told about these changes that are going to be made. Okay, this is a chair. I don't know. I think. Sometimes the staff are very hesitant because of, they're told that if you do this or that, no, sometimes they're afraid of retaliation. So it is, that's just a concern of mine, Chair. Thank you.
Chair, last, it's silly. Thank you for putting those concerns on the table. Going forward, we'll. Guess. Keep that. Item on the table as well as the other items that Honorable Vice Chair. Requested. Okay, committee members, anybody else?
Chairman, Solana.
Honorable Halona. You have the floor.
Oh.
And welcome, welcome.
Well, thank you.
We're all wondering where you were.
Yeah, I had. Just a real quick excuse. I had a meeting on my, our fire station this morning at nine o'clock, so I was on the telephone with that, trying to get that squared away. Anyway, yeah, I, good morning, everybody and. I was listening to most of the information that was being concerned, talked about there. I think. The only one that I know of right now that I have a lot of concern with your program is that, is that six of the. The services that you're talking about for the ambulants. Does that include the six thirty eight contracts with IHS that what the ambulances are under now? That's the only one real concern that I have. I'm pretty sure that's what we're talking about right now, but. The transfer with all this under. The departments that they want to move these units to. Is that one that is undercover, is it under six thirty eight? Chairman?
Let me, is Jesse Delmar on the call? Not, then. We'll go back to. Mr. Chris Kaskoli.
Thank you. Chairman, so to answer Mr. Honorable. Halona's question, currently EMS is a contracted six thirty eight. Under Title One with IHS, one of the three separate contracts that. Dr. Jim alluded to earlier. So there wouldn't be any changes that I would foresee besides possibly going under one master contract. But there wouldn't be any changes to the services provided. Thank you.
I guess, Mr. Kaskoli, respective of. Ambulances, are those covered by the six thirty eight contract? Are they, those six thirty eight funds, are they used by?
Chairman, so yes, that's correct.
Honorable Halona, you have follow up?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, a short follow up on those funds as well. I know there's a couple of areas around some in this community that want to. Put in a new facility for ambulance. To be located there and is this as well that your program is going to be. To cover all those two, wherever they need new facilities to be put up? Chairman?
Okay, one more time, please. State, restate your question then.
Thanks, Chairman.
Inaudible.
Yeah, on the, on the. Some locations around the Navajo Nation do not have a facility for. Ambulance services. And so are those locations going to be put under your care too as well to create those kind of facilities? That need them? Chairman?
Thank you. Mr. Kaskoli, Dr. Jim.
Chairman, so I can go ahead and. Answer that as best as I can and then if Dr. Jim wants to add anything. In relation to facilities. But as in terms of EMS, Honorable Halona. There are majority of our EMS stations or we call field offices. Are situated inside. An IHS facility or a six thirty eight facility. Currently, we don't really, we don't have any standalone. Facilities besides the one in Tohachile. And. But that would be. Planning that we would certainly move forward on in the future as we expand, but just. Bear in mind though that the current funding that we get from IHS doesn't allow for any. Construction of facilities. We would have to look, look at more of the modular type of, but that's certainly something that we're planning for. Thank you.
Chairman?
Honorable Halona. Do your follow up.
Thank you, Chairman. Well. Well, I bring that up because right now I know a site from Tohachi. Right here in Tohachi, we have a facility that's separate from the hospital. And I know they were trying to look for a new location to put that facility because the location they're in is going to be torn down. The other thing about that is I'm. Having the works right now of putting together a fire station. With a substation there in Tohachi as well and. That would, that's one location that I'm looking forward to putting the EMTs in that same station as well. I think they'll work well together and but we just need to figure out what kind of status that we need to have when it comes to. Utilizing the building. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Honorable Halona. Dr. Jill Jim and Mr. Kaskoli. Of the six thirty eight healthcare corporations. How many of those corporations. Create their own EMS? For myself, I can't recall, but it, I think it's pertinent to this discussion. And if they're contracted over on that side, then they wouldn't be part of this transfer. Or will they be part of the transfer? Sir Kaskoli, Dr. Jill Jim.
Chairman, so this is. Chris, I'm sorry, can you repeat your question?
Okay, we have. Let's see, one, two, three, four. Six thirty eight healthcare corporations. That contract healthcare with the IHS. And of those. Corporations. Do they also contract for EMS?
Thank you, Chairman, so. Yet the Navajo Nation EMS is in those six thirty eight facilities, including the IHS, the federal facilities. There would be no, no, everything would be. Part of this transfer. We don't have independent. I guess ambulances that are at the six thirty eight facilities prior to the. Facilities going six thirty eight. EMS remained under the Navajo Nation, so. It is still, it remains under the Navajo Nation today, yet the facilities when they switch over. So those services have have and will continue and they will all be part of this transition. Thank you.
Ultimately, with this self governance healthcare. That will happen, so. I guess that would be the only concern I would have. But we can address it in follow up. Honorable Halona. As far as the facilities that you're talking about. Torreon is seeking. General Obligation Bonds. In the state of New Mexico. Design and Planning Grant has been completed. We do have blueprints. Almost similar to the Tohajile. EMS building. That's an outlet that you could pursue. The chapter, the state and the county would build the building and. Navajo Nation EMS would operate out of that facility.
Thank you, Chairman, and that's type of facility we're trying to create here as well as at the. Detached fire station and to house all three locations, their fire station, the. EMTs as well as the. Substation for the police as well. Thank you, Chair. I'll look into that as well.
Thank you. With that, committee members, do you have any more, any other questions? All right, if not, then let's move to four B, Navajo Department of Health and Navajo Division of Social Services. One, the Naval Treatment Center for Children and Their Families Program to go from Division of Social Services to the Department of Health. Presenters, Dr. Jill Jim, Deanna Nizwut Gishy and is that Marlinda Littleman that was also on the call?
Marla in Vegas, I'm here.
Okay, who's going to go first? Dr. Jim?
Yeah, I'll go first and I'll
Okay.
And I'll have Dr. Brenser add to that as well, but I'll kind of reiterate the same thing. So again, on to not also his committee members and those on the call. And as I mentioned, one of the main reasons, like we were indicating here, is the Navajo Treatment Center for Children and Their Families Program also has a separate six thirty eight Title I contract with the Navajo Area Office and it's also to streamline services. If you really look at the intention of the Navajo area providing these particular health services to the Navajo Nation. And at some point, I think what we're doing is we're just complementing each other and integrating and coordinating better. That's the outcome that we're seeking. And if we assume at least a hospital one of these days or a clinic, I think it will definitely strengthen all of this stuff that we're talking about here, not only EMS or the Navajo Treatment Center for Children and Their Families, because although we operate these programs outside a health, a health facility, it makes sense that the Navajo Nation owns a health facility and runs an health facility. So that there is seamless coordination between mental health services, EMS services and all the services that we talk about. So so that's the intention here. So so just like EMS and just like DOH, the Navajo Treatment Center for Children and Their Families Program receives a contract, but it's far smaller than the other two contracts that we have and, and I don't, and I think the merge of the this particular program into behavioral health not only supports their clinical capacity and also increasing services to families and and integrating that into our existing substance use treatment prevention, prevention and treatment programs. So that's the benefit. I mean, with all of this said, like, all we're doing is trying to streamline services. And that way there is resources are used better, staffing or talking to each other and not in silos. And so I, so I believe that this is one, another good decision. It's not a matter of when we should have did this, like, a long time ago. If we all remember, we've been in a pandemic. I mean, year one, for the department, I was just learning and quickly had to learn what the department needed to do. But we all contributed to the services and the needs during the pandemic. And I, I believe all of those experience, the experiences that we had in the pandemic continued to validate what we need to do to, to integrate these programs and so that we can better provide the Navajo people. So that would be sort of my comment and opening to this and the need for this. And I think Dr. Brenser can kind of talk to about the benefits of the program and then I think we can then move on to DSS. So Dr. Brenser, I know you've been talking with the program manager during this time. So if it's okay, so now I would like to give time to Dr. Brenser.
Thank you, Dr. Jim. Dr. Michelle Brenser, you have the teleconference floor.
Hello, Yatay. Good morning. I hope you all can hear me okay. Yeah, I hope so. Okay. So this is Michelle or Dr. Brenser, as Dr. Jim has stated. And I'm the Health Services Administrator. Sorry, I'm trying to be brief. And everything Dr. Jim states is, is very important for Division of Behavioral Mental Health Services with our mission and helping our people with substance use disorder or co-occurring disorders that are mental health related and includes the whole spectrum. Currently, you know, we focus on adolescents on up to adulthood and really to ensure that we're focusing on all of the age, ages, if you will, you know, we do want to obviously continue to work with the families, the children, because we know is anybody that they are the pathway of really helping break any kind of negativity or unhealthiness that may come with substance use or co-occurring mental health issues that the individuals were trying to help. So with the kind of integration or just complementing of what DBMHS, what we do with the mission statement and working with substance use disorder as well as the families, in a sense, we you know, find that, you know, the prevention or the outreach sections are already doing some of this at that more prevention level or outreach level, but to have the clinicians also to help in that area of the little ones or the children as they maybe have their families going through treatment as well. I mean, those are some of the benefits of working in the full spectrum of children, the adolescents, the adults, the whole family in general is to really work together to make sure that we have the best resources to provide that assistance. Because again, we know that this can really continue on in families if we're not able to hit all the, or address, I'm sorry, all of the areas that need the assistance. So that would be my kind of explanation of how the, you know, integration or just the complementing of both programs and working with Ms. Antoinette Miller and looking at our plan of operation is was very similar. I think the, the main things that were different obviously were the population with the children and how their referrals can come through. More can be related to abuse, neglect, or things of that nature. But also, they may just come in in other routes with substance use, mental health issues. And of course, just like us, they would probably refer out if there were more mental health, like medications, what might need, be needed or other treatment might be needed with the IHS or six thirty eight facilities. So in essence, it looked very, very, very complimentary in that manner that we, you know, our goal and our focus is the same. But again, just to get a full holistic round picture of that treatments from the young ones, you know, as they get older or as whenever they may need it at that time. So that is what I'd like to present to you all. And there is even possible other areas, you know, I just real quickly with DBMHS, we've looked at and I've tried to work with the state of New Mexico with is eventually having a women's and children's treatment center. This would be more residential for women and their children or younger children. And so those are things that, you know, we still have on our radar. So in that way, even this type of working together or transfer would really be essential as well. So thank you and Yatay for this time to speak.
Thank you very much. Chair had to step away for a moment, so I'll take over. Who among my colleagues would like to ask a question or make a comment at this time? Fred, I'll ask a couple of questions. Can we talk a little bit more about the funding sources for the NTCCFP? I'll go to NDOH or DSS right now. Whoever would like to chime in there.
Good morning, Vice Chair and members of the Health Education Human Services Committee. This is Deanna Nesswut Gishy. So thank you for the opportunity to provide some remarks and answer that specific question, Honorable Slater. The Navajo Treatment Center for Children and Families, they receive IHS funding. And they, that's the only department or program that receives IHS fundings within the Division of Social Services. And so we also look at trying to assist with other funding such as six thirty eight. They do have their own six thirty eight contract. But so it's IHS and six thirty. Thank you.
When you say six thirty eight, six thirty eight, what, which funding source?
And I think that's the same thing, right? The Title I contracts? I'm sorry, it's BIA and IHS. I'm sorry. Thank you.
For which BIA program also provides funding?
Thank you, Vice. Yes, yes. Thank you, Vice Chair, for that follow up question. So so they receive BIA funding for their, their services that they provide, which is under six thirty eight administration funds. And then they also have the IHS funding as well. Thank you.
But I guess my question is which program under the Bureau of Indian Affairs administers the program funding to the Navajo Treatment Center for Children and Families?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair, for that follow up question. So Navajo Treatment Center for Children and Families, they administer their own funding. They have a, a contract specifically within Division of Social Services. We have three contracts with the BIA. One is Department of Family Services, one is Navajo Family Services, Department of Family Services and the Navajo Treatment Center for Children and Families. So each program or department, they administer their own funding that's given to them directly from BIA. Thank you.
Okay, I, I think we're not understanding each other. So for example, the Navajo Nation could contract with the Bureau of Indian Affairs Road Maintenance Program. That would be the program for the Transportation Division of BIA. That would oversee that funding for, you know, any number of programs. There is an entity within the Bureau of Indian Affairs that administers the funding to the nation. So that's what I am trying to get detail on is who is the program or what is the program in the Bureau of Indian Affairs that administers this program, that provides funding to the nation in that six thirty eight contract?
Thank you, Vice Chair, for that follow up question again. I'll have Ms. Brenda Sosi, the Principal Accountant, provide maybe a clearer response. Maybe I'm not saying it correctly. Thank you. Brenda?
Good morning, Vice Chair and members of the committee. This is Brenda Sosi, I'm the Principal Accountant with Division of Social Services. In response to the question on the funding that Navajo Treatment Center receives, they have three funding sources that they receive. One is with the IHS and then one is with the six thirty eight and they get partial funding also from the federal Title four B subpart one. So that's the funding source that they have as well. So your question on the six thirty eight, can you repeat that question? Vice Chair, please?
I'm trying to understand what program within the Bureau provides funding to this program under that six thirty eight contract that was mentioned? Or who are the different federal programs that provide funding? Not generally like IHS and BIA, but specifically what department, program, division, et cetera, within? I was speaking specifically to BIA, but now I guess I'd like to broaden it since you said there's three funding sources. If you could identify those specific, not just, okay, it's the Bureau of Indian Affairs or it's the Indian Health Service, but who within those federal programs are providing the funding? Thank you.
With the one from the Title four B that I'm talking about, that's from Administration for Children's and Families. From, that's what they get for the six thirty eight, partial of the funding that they receive. Then under the six thirty eight, which is the BIA that they get. And then of course, IHS, BIA as well. So that's the funding source that they have, three of them for now.
So ATF funding is part of Health and Human Services, right? And then IHS is also under that, but just glossed over BIA again. Who? What, what program from the Bureau of Indian Affairs is overseeing this?
What program? Like what IHS?
You know, there's like, there's minerals and energy under BIA. There's all these different programs with.
Mr. Vice Chair, this is Michelle Binay Nakai from DOJ. I can try to answer your question.
Okay, thank you.
So for Department of Social Services, they did have some different contracts with the BIA for six thirty eight services. I believe it was last year that they wanted to separate. We had like two contracts with, with BIA for six thirty eight, but because of the way that DSS reorganized itself, they wanted the programs to have their separate individual six thirty eight contracts. So previously, there were two, I believe, one that covered the administration of DSS services and also like general, what do you call those? General service where they provide assistance to people, like to families that need some assistance. And then the other one was for equal services for Indian under the Indian Child Welfare Act. So because the way that NDSS wanted to redo their contracts, we ended up separating them into three instead. So now there's one for Navajo Family Services, one for Navajo Family Assistant Services, and then one for NTCTF. So I believe the one that, that for BIA under, under BIA for NTCCFF, it's some of the administrative costs that we're going towards all of the DSS services that the nation provides. So that's the six thirty eight program under BIA, under the IHS six thirty eight contract for NTCCFF. Under the IHS 638 contract for NTCCF, they receive funding for providing services to children that are affected by these, the substance abuse. So, it's a little bit different, but under the BIA contract, it's mostly their administrative services, I believe. Hope that provides some clarity.
Okay, so there is some amount of funding that's made available from BIA, and it's really for administrative purposes. And which? You said that there's an administrative contract. Again, I guess going back to that question, what is that under? Like, what AIGS is that under? Who? The Navajo Nation has, what? A contracting officer on the federal side? Who are they talking with?
Yes, it's, it was. So, these services were Department of Social Services that BIA used to provide, but the nation had already contracted them some years ago. We have had that for a while now. And the portion that I guess got separated recently was for mostly administrative services regarding like their case management and making sure that their staff have appropriate training, licensure, certification, and things like that. So, BIA used to have a social services program, and that's what we contracted.
Okay, so if we were going to advocate for this program at the budget formulation, or what do they call it, Chair? All the regions together? I've had enough coffee this morning. I'm trying to chug through. Civic, Tribal Interior Budget Council. What line item would this funding be under?
Vice Chair, this is Brenda Sosie. The budget categories are what you're talking about? It will be under the Mental Health. And then, partial of it is from Hospital and Clinics under the IHS. Then, with the BIA, usually there's two different categories as well. And that category will be under Administration for Navajo Treatment Center for Children and Families. Mr. Chair?
So, Administration under which category?
Human Services, Mr. Chair.
Is someone from Contract and Grant Section is trying to speak?
Can you hear me? This is Jan James. I'm the Principal Contract Analyst under.
Jan James? Jan James, okay, thank you. You're recognized.
Okay, I think what you're asking is what department for? Under BIA, it is Department of Social Services. And for IHS, it's under Department of Public Health Services.
Okay, so Department of Social Services under IHS. I mean, under, under BIA. That's what I was really trying to. Okay.
Yes.
And then, the administration, administration line item under, I guess, them. Okay. Cool. Well, thank you very much for all that information to all the presenters. I think a big thing that the committee is confronting right now with the proposed reorganization is thinking through the different funding streams and what makes the most sense for housing these programs. I agree, and I'm speaking personally right now, maybe not as the Chair of Pro Tem, that the best way to, or the most efficient and maybe the best way to maximize the impact of like clinical programs or the clinical adjacent programs is to have them housed together, keep them in the Department of Health, and then look at a system where, you know, we're in better communication. We're not in silos. We're making all of these services easily available and that it's intelligible to our people. And I think that housing them within the Department of Health makes sense. I certainly understand what my Chair, Delegate Winika, was saying on making program changes in the midst of, you know, one transfer of power between councils or potentially between administrations. And I fully appreciate that. But that said, you know, hopefully, when we get the program, the Department of Health and DOJ back to discuss the planning grant, I want to hear some more within that on these transfers and bringing them under the Department of Health. So, just something that I'd like NDOH to flag and the Department of Justice to flag for when you come back before us. Thank you to the program. Well, it seems like we had everybody and their brother explain the funding sources. So, thank you to everybody and their brother.
Mr. Vice Chair, this is Deanna. May I add some comments as well? I didn't do a presentation as such as Dr. Jim.
Okay, is this going to be specific to the Center for Children and Their Families program? Or are you talking about the?
Okay. Just very, very brief. All right, thank you. So, as Dr. Jim and Dr. Brenzer had provided remarks in the transfer, this is, and I do hear Honorable Doug Winika's concern with why we're doing this at the, near the tail end of this current administration. Dr. Jim, they touched on that. We did start these plannings at the beginning, and there are actually four workgroups within all of directors are charged with. And Dr. Jim and I were overseeing, co-chairing the reorganization task force. There's three other finance personnel or communication IT. So, when we did initially start meeting in the latter part of 2019 and early 2020 on our reorganization, so we've had these discussions a few years ago. And then, also in response to the Tribal Community Response Plan, TCRP, that is something new that the nation is looking at. So, the Tribal Community Response Plan, I'm overseeing the Victim Services section. And at that time, we learned that we're not doing this due justice for our families that are going through trauma of missing individuals, missing and murdered individuals. And so, in that, this is where we learned, and which Dr. Brenzer was part of the workgroup with the Tribal Community Response Plan, is that she has a small response team, but they didn't have the full therapeutic services which we had within the Division of Social Services. So, this is where, in these other workgroups that we're doing, we're learning that, again, this is new, the TCRP, that we need to streamline our services and not be fragmented. So, I just wanted to add that in, that this is something that has been in the works from late 2019 and then now with the new response with the Tribal Community Response Plan. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Nasuigishi, when you say the response plan, that's the Deny Action Plan, correct?
Mr. Vice Chair, no, that is something different. This is more in the missing and murdered indigenous individuals. And that's where, again, we've had several workgroup meetings with Public Safety Office of the Prosecutor, Department of Justice, as far as Department of Health, on how we're going to have a more streamlined response process when there are individuals who are reported as being missing and murdered. Thank you.
Okay, can you forward a copy of the Community Response Plan to the committee?
Certainly, I will. Thank you.
In developing, I gotta be honest, I've never seen that plan before. This is the first, I'm familiar with it. These are the ones that were the pilot projects from Operation Lady Justice. Is that right?
Yes, that is correct. Mr. Vice Chair.
I'm trying to search my inbox right now. See if we've been forwarded that. What, when was it completed?
Mr. Vice Chair, this is an ongoing new project. So, I do have the initial documentation that I can forward. Again, it's a work in progress, and that's where we have seen that we have part of the team within Social Services, but yet Department of Health, Department of Behavioral and Mental Health is trying to do that response. And this is where we looked at the realignment. And I will forward the document, Mr. Vice Chair.
Okay, so this is a work in progress, but you're taking actions right now to affect some or bring into reality some of the logic and planning thus far. Is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Vice Chair, that is correct.
Okay. On that note, yeah, I think whatever documentation you can send over to the committee would be very important for us to review. I just want to emphasize the importance of coordinating and working with entities like missing, murdered, and now relatives. You know, they've done so much to identify, respond, and lay the groundwork from a grassroots level, how the nation and how other parts of Navajo can respond in these instances. You know, they have their toolkit and a whole variety of other things that they've worked on. And I'm sure you're in contact with them, but if you ever need more connections by myself or Delia Crati, I think we'd happily assist in that conversation. And if you want, after the review, maybe we could all convene the... Well, I'll stop right there because that's getting too far ahead and some other items. Committee members, do we have further questions on Item 4B? On the potential transfer of the Navajo Treatment Center for Children and Their Families program?
Thank you, Vice Chair Slater, for taking over the work session. I'm busy catching up on mail and emails. At this point, committee members, any questions? I guess, from the Chair's perspective, we need something in writing to really see the actual aspects of the transfer. Again, where some of the offices are located and how the supervisory aspects would just transition without real, any complications. But we'll be looking at. Again, 4B asterisk on Honorable Edison Winika's concerns about the timing of these transfers. Committee members, anybody else have any questions, comments? Honorable Vice Chair Slater?
Thank you, Chair. And this, I want to go back to DOH and DPS on Item A, and then, of course, DOH and DSS on Item B. What has the communication and planning process been like from the ground up? Because I, you know, I've been a Navajo Nation employee, a little worker bee. I've been a manager, and I've now been a delegate for a couple of years. In all of those experiences, I've gotten the impression that transfers, big organizational changes, et cetera, oftentimes happen at the top, and they're just told to everyone. And there isn't a clear planning process where everyone knows that this is the plan. They feel like they can provide input, that'll be validated and, you know, respected as people contemplate, you know, what are the best organizational moves within government? So, can you explain what the process has been? Are you talking with your frontline workers? Are you talking with those who are, you know, at the bottom of the totem pole? Or is this something that's in conjecture at the top, and you want to see what the committee is thinking before you go back to your frontline workers and everyone else? Please answer that. Thank you.
Vice Chair, I can answer for DOH first. Again, thank you for this time, Dr. Jim. And I know that our staff has been involved at every level. There is a Division of Behavioral and Mental Health Services and a Division of Public Health Services, which is the two primary divisions that are going to be impacted. And we are updating our entire plan of operations. So, we, and these are the reasons why the inclusions are going to be necessary in that 164 document. And so, it's sort of, it's not only the integration of these services that we're looking at, but also updating the plan of operation. As you know, that process around the updating of this requires your, their committee's review and comments and feedback as well. So, I'm aware that the divisions, we are not, I guess, to some extent, I can say that we're not fully just having conversations at the fill level only for the reasons that you mentioned, that we want to make sure that we gain the support from the committee. And there isn't sort of those transition plans. We understand the financial, the financial transitions and also the locations of offices. I mean, those are just clearly the expectations that we have right now. But if we do further try to have these conversations at the fill level, I think it was, we're kind of putting the horse before the cart. So, we want to make sure that we get the, any questions and concerns answered, I think, before we, from the DOH side, to fully discuss these with the frontline staff and how it makes sense. And yes, I mean, I think that fill staff are aware of these changes, but I believe that when we think about transitioning programs and services, I believe our employees are very adaptable to the concept of this because, as I mentioned, we are streamlining services. And I think it will benefit sort of that. In our plan of operation, you'll see the hierarchical structure around supervision. And so, if there are questions, this conversation today and these work sessions and are going to be included in those documents once we finalize. Any questions that we might have from DOJ regarding the documents for each of the divisions and the entire department for the Department of Health? And I hope that the committee continues to provide questions and comments and work together in making this transition happen for the Department of Health because, as I mentioned, we've been in this pandemic for over two years now. We didn't have the ability to make these changes. And now that we've learned how to get vaccines and address other mitigation strategies, even though our numbers are increasing right now, and they're slightly increasing, but we're not seeing an impact in hospitalizations. And so, really, in the COVID-19 response, that has been our primary focus as the Commission of Disaster Management has authorized DOHs to do this. So, I just want to kind of just continue to reiterate that the workload of the Department of Health has been. that the workload of the Department of Health has been not only the function of what we're supposed to do, but in addition to oversee the entire response for the Navajo Nation. So, I would just stop there, but I just wanted to thank you for asking that question. So, I don't know if Mr. Cascoli or DS can also ask or answer any of your questions as well. Thank you.
Mr. Vice Chair, this is Deanna Nessalcusi.
Anybody else? Ms. Kishy, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. So, for Division of Social Services in regards to the Navajo Treatment Center for Children and Families, Ms. Antoinette Miller is the program manager of her, the program, and it's one of our smaller programs, and so she does have five offices. And so, Ms. Miller has participated in discussions regarding the program transfer. So, she is having, attending those meetings in regards to her whole team, if she has provided that information. Again, as Dr. Jim had indicated, where we wanted to have a discussion with the committee for feedback and response, and that we will be moving forward with notifying all of the programs as well. And we do have these discussions at our weekly Division of Social Services managers meeting. All seven managers attend, so that they're aware of what situations are going in within the Division of Social Services. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kishy. Committee members, do you have any follow-ups? And again, the committee will be looking forward to documents to be presented to the committee. All of this right now has been verbal, I didn't see any emails coming through. All of this is very preliminary. Committee members, any further questions? If not, then let's go to item 5C. Division of Social Services. Current financial liability of the following Division of Social Services departments and program. One, Department of Family Services. Presenters would be Ms. Regina Yasi and Ms. Frida White. Ms. Yasi?
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the Health Human Services Committee, this is Regina Yasi. Trying to unmute myself here. Thank you for this opportunity and this time, committee members, Mr. Chair. Regarding the... Okay, so, um... If I could get a clarification, Mr. Chair, this is just regarding the merging or the merging of DD program with DFS, am I correct? In talking about that, just so that I'm clear. Proposed transfer of developmental disability to DFS?
Yes, Honorable Slater just pointed that out, yes, the transfer.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, the Department of Family Services has several field offices with over 100 staff. Department Developmental Disabilities have four field offices with administration office here in Winderock, and is being overseen by Frida White, who is the program supervisor. The purpose of getting the two programs to merge is basically because both programs have an intergovernmental agreement with the state of Arizona. Both programs, DFS and DD, serve unique populations with the, through the IGA, such as DFS ALTEX, the Arizona Long Term Care Services. ALTEX, when I say ALTEX, that's Arizona Long Term Care. IGA services elderly and adult members who are enroll members with the Arizona Access Program. Through that Access Program, they're able to enroll with ALTEX. And once they're enrolled and are considered members, they can be, they can receive services, case management services through one of our field offices with case managers. And that's through an IGA in terms of services. DD program, and on the other hand, is also the same way in terms of developmental disability population. They also have case managers throughout Navajo with, on the Arizona side, that serve populations that need assistance through their case management. And their determination is done also with a state, state system. Both ALTEX and DD utilize the state of Arizona case management database, which is unique to their own programs. And through that, they have their unique program operations manual, their case management manual, and forms, and case management procedures that they must comply with. So, with that said, Mr. Chair, that is one of the reasons in terms of the streamlining reasons for bringing the two programs together in terms of getting the unique services under one department so that, so that we're better able to meet the needs of clientele in both sectors. The services will not be interrupted, the IGAs itself will not be interrupted. They are unique and separate. They will remain separate, they have separate funding sources. One is through the Arizona Access, and the other one is through the Arizona DD Program. So, they have their own funding streams and their own IGAs, which are unique to their program. The only thing is just bringing the two programs together under one department, which would be Department of Family Service. Mr. Chair, you know, I actually wanted to give some time to Ms. Frida White, she is also on the call, who may also provide some additional information regarding the proposed merge. Ms. White?
Thank you, Regina. Good morning, Health Education and Human Services Committee members, Chair, Vice Chair, and everyone on the call. Just to add some additional information to what Ms. Yasi provided to the committee and all that are present on the call. As far as some of the concerns that were noted earlier for another merger, the locations of our offices will not change. We are currently housed in state of Arizona buildings at this point. That will not change. As far as equipment, our equipment is through the state of Arizona, so that will not affect any, any program or services in regard to equipment change. Additionally, one of the concerns also mentioned was communication with staff. You know, we are a very small program, so I have constant communication with my staff, and my staff are aware of this possibility of moving under DFS, in which they are fully in support of as well. So, just wanted to add that, thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Ms. White. Committee members, any questions? Okay, I guess the Department of Family Services has the appropriate clinical folks to accept the the developmental disabilities program? Do they?
Mr. Chair, members of the committee, this is Regina Yasi. No, we don't have clinical staff. Ms. White, if you could elaborate, I believe the, if, you can elaborate in terms of what is needed and required in terms of clinical staffing pattern.
Absolutely. Chair, if I may address your question? As far as clinical supervision, I believe that's what you're referring to. My staff do not require any clinical supervision as far as case management goes. We do not provide therapy or any services that require that type of supervision. The supervision that is required is over the process, over our standard work. Our processes are very specific in regard to our timelines, completion of our, pretty much our processes during the course of opening and closing meetings, or what we call person-centered plans. Our timelines are very specific, so supervision in that regard, overseeing timeline of smarts, and also completion of access-required timelines and guidelines. That's what I think you're referring to as supervision. But clinically, there's no clinical oversight required for this program.
And then, under the Department of Education, they have the Office of Social Education and Rehabilitative Services. What kind of coordination, collaboration do you do with that program?
Yes, I can, I can answer your question, Chair. As far as with OSHERS, that program is vocational rehabilitation program in regard to seeking or pursuing some sort of employment. We do sometimes refer to that program within DDD itself. And I'll use DDD as in reference to my program, Developmental Disabilities. We do have our own VR within Developmental Disabilities, which members can partake of. So, they could either choose to go through OSHERS, or they could go through our programs VR. Thank you.
Committee members, any other questions? Okay, Honorable Vice Chair Slater, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. If you would permit me to ask a couple of questions that are not related to the transfer, but are related to the Family Services. You were on an email thread with Delegate Kialan Begay about some issues at the Chinli DFS, and I said we might be able to bring them up today.
Oh, yes, yes.
Would it be okay to ask them right now?
You certainly can. Thank you for bringing that.
Sorry.
That's all right, it is, I'm glad you were short this morning.
I still feel so foggy. I'm trying not to drink as much caffeine. I feel like once you reduce your intake, your mind is like you can even go get a cappuccino. Okay. So, this is on behalf of my friend, Delegate Kialan Begay. He had received, I think, some reporting maybe from some of his constituents about the operations of DFS in Chinli, and asked us as oversight to look into some of them. So, on that matter, I'll read what I can. So, what I understand, there's some in the Chinli DFS office who have not gotten their wage adjustments from this past year. There's only one CPS worker covering the entire agency, and only one CMS staff member who's handling long-term services. And they're conveying that clients or citizens are frustrated because only responding to priority one and two cases, and CPS is burning out. And the last item is the computers are very outdated. Takes a very long time for them to work and get responses. Apparently, there may be new computers that are on the way, but they're waiting for certain software to be installed and not tacking services to clients. So, I know we've had concerns in the past on computers, and really hoping that since the last time we discussed this, there would be some updates in the positive direction. Like, more of the same with not having up-to-date computer systems for our staff there in the field. And I know they need to communicate with state or federal programs, so that impacts the ability of them sometimes. Could you respond to those items? And you could do that verbally now, but I'd appreciate a written response to my, to the committee, and then Delegate Kialan Begay as well, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair Slater and members of the committee. This is Regina Yasi. Regarding the general wage adjustment. Hello?
Yes, hello.
Oh, okay, just heard a loud clicking sound. Regarding the general wage adjustment for staff, overall, yes, for Department of Family Service, we are, we have the assistance of executive office to HR to assist Department of Family Service in getting the budget revisions completed and submitted, approved, and getting the Personnel Action Forms, PAFs, also completed and submitted thereafter. So, it really starts with the budget revision, so that they are, we're having the assistance of the HR. On this note, who's been also working with Department of Personnel Management to get an updated listing, personnel who have yet to receive their general wage adjustment listing. So, with that coordinated effort with DPM, and getting those budget revisions submitted so that there is enough funding to cover the general wage adjustment costs. The other question was regarding personnel and vacancies to be filled. Again, we're also soliciting the help of the HR with Executive Office here to assist in getting the vacant positions advertised, which have, some have been, and continuously working on getting those into the, over to DPM to get them advertised, and getting referrals, and conducting those interviews, and hiring completed. And yes, there are a number of vacant positions with the Chinli Field Office that need to be filled. The other item is looking at outdated computer equipment. We are currently working with, because BIA is a, BI, I'm sorry, the Chinli office is a BIA building, we are coordinating with the BIA Navajo Regional Office. And this has been And this has been regarding getting the approval, signature letter signed by BIA and back to our office so that upgrade in internet connectivity can be done, one. And then, secondly, thereafter, then the computer equipment will then be dispersed to the field office. So, we are working on getting the letter signed. I've sent out numerous responses and updates to BIA. We're just waiting for a response from them so that we could get into UA on board with getting the fiber connectivity to the building completed, and then looking at the upgrade and the overall internet connections. So, yes, there is equipment here, and it's just a matter of getting the fiber connectivity completed. Mr. Chair?
Yasi, thank you, Ms. Yasi. Sache, Honorable Kialan Begay. I hear you're Zooming with us. You have the floor. R six.
Can you hear me?
Sure.
Oh, okay. Yasi, uh, Sache, House Committee. How do... Chairman, Vice Chair. How do... Um, how do we help them with a situation where they hesitate to bring this up to the administration level at Wenderup? How... How to proceed in addressing the issue that they have been... They have concern of... Without any, I guess, some type of retaliation or anything. And that's the reason why a lot of our Navajo programs... They're being asked or told to go... I mean, yeah, there is a chain of command and protocols. And I'm sure a lot of our Navajo people addresses these issues, but it really doesn't get anywhere. Several areas. I mean, I guess the question will be, is when will it be resolved? I mean, the specific, the timeline of everything. Because we provide funding to the program, and then we... The expectation is that the service is being done to the Navajo people. But yet, if there's none... Well, the existence of an office and the situation that we have, we're talking about people, individuals, or Navajo people. That's one area. I mean, how specifically, I mean, what is the overall plan that the program has been addressing this? Although, everyone is being assigned latterly to a different position without really making a plan, and then that former position program begins to be idle. And I'd like to... I will be defending the staff at the Chinley office. So, if they're going to be able to act quickly to do that, I mean, why can't the program at Wenderup level act quickly to resolve it? At the same time, how do we address it? I mean, here as a council... But I believe that there's not really... As far as personnel, the budget's not really an issue. It's just a matter of a vacancy. But as far as the internet, the program, the computer... I mean, is everything still being manually being addressed? Well, a lot of these programs are being utilized across the Navajo Nation. But yet, all that's... The program... The other thing that comes to mind is that how much is the Navajo Nation paying for these software, but yet, it's not being utilized effectively? How much are we spending? They're not cheap. I mean, I pay almost about $200 for 360 Microsoft to utilize it. But if it's a Navajo Nationwide program, I mean, I'm sure this is very sophisticated software, but it's not being utilized at the agency level. But yet, the Navajo Nation is paying for it. So, Sache, committee members. And I'm not sure what is the best way to address this particular issue. If it's happening at the one agency, I'm sure it's probably happening at the other agency as well. Although, the other one, the response cases. Because they're being told that only priorities... The other area... I guess they're being told, or we'll get to it when we get to it. These are the areas that I believe that our staff, if they're stressed then. The other thing that was brought to my attention, and I'm not sure, as far as personnel, the wage adjustment. I mean, I'd like to request for the statement that I forward each bullet point. The key, we get a response in writing specifically with timeline for me to share with the Chinley Agency staff. I appreciate the quickness of getting this on the agenda to discuss it. But again, like I said, there's sometimes the program says that we've been addressing this, we've addressed this, but not much is happening. I guess the last resort is that, okay, I mean, I'll just take a chance to inform the delegates, or our regional delegates, about the situation and see what happens. And then, of course, the respect, the oversight program. But the program is under the House Committee. Again, what specific can we do to help them with the situation? I mean, getting the more staffing there, getting the adjustment pay, and then even, I'm sure, a lot of these field staff haven't received any of their hazard pay. And then, also, there's another program. I believe I forward that to you as well. So, again, the people, the workers are reaching out to say that... Not effective service is being provided, afforded to our Navajo people. A lot of our Navajo people are beginning to get into some... Make confidence in these particular programs. But maybe through you, I'd like to request a written response on these particular issues. And then, I'd like to share that with the staff in the Chinley Agency level, and to ensure them that the council has been, and the Oversight Committee has been, and will be addressing this particular issue, and how we continue to monitor and update on their situation with the issues that have brought up to us. So, I would ask you, although... Other committee members, House Committee.
Chair, Sache. And I guess, for the folks on the call, all those talking about the transfer of programs. Again, it affects people, personnel at the field offices, agency offices. For myself, coordination, communication, moving up and down the organization rather than just top-down, really enhances program and service delivery. And if people feel like they're being told, "Don't do this", when at the local level, it is appropriate to reach out to each other or to try to enhance the services. I think that that's very much needed. And again, here we have another colleague basically saying there should be no retaliation. Programs under our oversight, they hear that from the committee. But somehow, retaliation aspect raises its ugly head here and there. And what do we have to do to really emphasize that? And again, we're in the aspects of caring for our employees, their mental, their social, and their behavioral health. Needs to be taken care of so that they can take care of their clients, take care of the people they deliver the services to. That's one aspect that we have to continue to emphasize. And I hope that as we move forward, that aspect will be an integral part of programs we oversee. Thank you, Sache, for bringing those issues. At the next regular meeting, we would... Ms. Angelita Benali, if we could get Ms. Crystal Curly, tribal liaison with the Navajo Regional Director, on the call regarding the connectivity issue at the Chinley facility. Ms. Curly has been really helpful in coordinating a lot of requests, getting them to the attention of the Regional Director. Thank you. Committee members, any other questions? Comments? Let's go down to Division of Social Services, Department of Self-Reliance. And committee members. Let's see, we got... I'd like to call for a recess right at noon. That way, we have some time to face paperwork before we convene to Navi. Let's go to self-reliance and see how far we get. Ms. Roxanne Gorman. This presentation is regarding the proposed transfer of Navajo Family Assistance Services from the Department of Self-Reliance to become a standalone program.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, so, and members of the Health and Human Services Committee. This is Roxanne Gorman. I'm the department manager. I presented at the last meeting and provided an overview that at the onset of our efforts, we were very optimistic that we could help establish the Navajo Family Assistance Services. One main component is the automation. We've been using a case management software for over 12 years to serve thousands of families each month with cash benefits, and it worked very well. And so, as a means to help the division's vision to improve and streamline services, we agreed to provide technical assistance to help the Navajo Family Assistance Services to automate lie heap, burial assistance, and general assistance, and CSBG. There were some concerns about automating the system for vendors. I believe that's still an item of discussion with the Office of Controller, using data port. When we first requested to automate, we had a problem with data port. And we included a committee in our response. I'm sorry, I am... Am I talking over someone? Hello?
We can hear you.
Okay. I'm sorry. I thought I was talking over someone. I apologize if I was. So...
It was the chair talking over you, so... You may continue. I'll keep silent.
Thank you, sir. So, the intent, again, was to help in fast, in becoming automated, and as a basis of what we've been doing with the Department for Self-Reliance. of what we've been doing with the department for self-reliance. The other intent was to update their policies, the batch, uh, the burial assistance and general assistance. And to also allow, by taking away these financial assistance, it allowed the social workers to focus on social work, because they were, um, spending a lot of time on processing financial assistance. And so we went in with very, uh, confident and optimistic, and as I recall, I did speak about what the impact of the pandemic was when we got hit. It was quite an undertaking thereafter because we were, um, also having to focus to continue our benefits to our, uh, thousands of families that we served, and INFAST in turn hadn't, um, was still in the process of establishing itself. And we were shifted to, um, uh, compressed work weeks. And so we main, we continued to maintain service, that was our major priority. However, we were not successful in automating INFAST, and it became all-consuming. They received a lot of funding that, um, that from the CARES Act, and I believe they also have funding from ARPA, that just, um, consumed, um, the work that, at the field level that was being done. And it also consumed, was beginning to consume our resources, which we can't allow because, uh, we are not allowed to subsidize non-TANA programs. We believed we were only going to provide technical assistance, he- help, help them with the automation, provide them support, uh, in the process of transfer, but it, it, it didn't happen that way, and I attribute it to the pandemic. So as a result of the potential harm to our department as an, uh, potential audit issue, I did consult with Ms. Neswudgishie, and, uh, at that time, she made a decision, and I supported it fully, to have INFAST transferred under her supervision, because she is funded by general funds, she doesn't have the limitation that TANA funds have. And in that manner, we were able to maintain, uh, our status, um, in good status, and for 2020, we do have a clean audit. So with that, the other, uh, points I want to make is that INFAST has some, uh, a, a lot of different funding sources. And they also were, um, under the umbrella of DFS, uh, the six thirty-eight contract. It was far better for them to have their own contract to administer the financial assistance and leave again DFS to focus on social work. Um, and so, uh, they, they were successful in getting their own six thirty-eight contract. And in that, they also have the LIHEAP and the CSBG funding, and the school clothing, uh, that too, um, needed, um, support, because those are through general funds. LIHEAP is federal, CSBG is federal, burial assistance and general assistance are six thirty-eight, and school clothing is general. So they had multiple funding, uh, require, uh, sources in which they dispense, uh, services. So through the, um, leadership of Ms. Neswudgishie, they're underway and, and continuing to provide the services, and also becoming automated and increasing their staffing capacity, as I understand it. So real briefly, that was, um, an overview of the reasons behind transferring INFAST back to, not back, but under, um, to become a standalone, and to also have it, um, changed into a kind of operation. Um, I hope that provides, uh, the overview, and I'm available for questions. Thank you, sir.
Committee members? Have any questions? Um, again, uh, I guess, uh, as we move forward on this, that, perhaps the biggest question would come from Controller's Office. However, uh, at this point in time, again, all of this is preliminary, we haven't seen any paperwork on it, and, uh, we would see how this moves forward. Committee members, uh... I, uh, there's no other questions, I'm going to call for an adjournment of this particular work session. So, both vice chair and myself, we're multitasking, we haven't, I haven't been to Windoroc in a period of two weeks, so it's all been by remote, and Sachee paperwork.
Mr. Chair, this is Deanna, may I provide a quick response?
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Health Education Human Services Committee. Uh, Mr. Chair, um, this work session is in regards to Legislation 0020-222, which, um, Mrs. Gorman had discussed regarding the, um, transfer, um, as well as the, um, DD program. It is currently in legislation, that the request was to have this work session in response. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Neswudgishie. It's noted. And, uh, again, preliminary thoughts are we'll call for another work session, complete all the related issues. Again, what we haven't seen is the, um, the legislation, yes, it calls for that, but the actual aspects, um, in writing as, uh, what was presented. Committee would like to see. Thank you. So with that, uh, committee members, I'm going to call for, um, an adjournment, and all the other outstanding issues will, uh, will be, uh, rescheduled into a, a new work session. Committee members and colleagues on the call...
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chair, uh, this is Rosalind Begay from Division of Social Services, requesting to address the committee.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair, Shunai, or, uh, members of the committee. While you're, um, um, pondering, um, your adjournment, uh, we'd like to request a date as to when the continued, uh, work session will be scheduled, so we can plan accordingly. Shunai, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Um, right now, uh, for all the folks on the call, right now there is a petition for a June thirteenth Navajo Nation special session. And as such, it's stuck on nine signatures. And for myself, I've asked speakers, staff, and Legislative Services to draft a new petition for Wednesday, June eighth, for the special session. Address 0086 and 0087, as I feel like we need to get that rolling as soon as possible, rather than later. So that's the part. And the, and the, that petition will require nine, excuse me, thirteen signatures by nine a.m. tomorrow morning for it, to float for June eighth. That's, uh, the aspect. And if June eighth works, then the proposed work session would be June thirteenth. So that's a possible date. Colleagues, committee members, uh, I urge you to sign the petition, because I think we have urgent need to, uh, either of those legislations. Thank you.
Chair, so.
Oh, hey.
That was good, Begay.
You have the floor, Chee.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of this week. So, um, on this new petition, wondering if, if we had signed the, the first petition, I wonder if we can ask for signature to be deleted and placed on this more recent one? Thank you, Chair.
Uh, I would, uh, have you converse with, uh, that Legislative Service Director Manuel Rico? I don't think, you don't need to withdraw, just sign the new petition. If we get thirteen, eight, nine tomorrow, we fly with Wednesday. I think it's already in the email, sent out to the twenty-fourth.
Chairman So?
Oh.
This is Manuel Rico with Legislative Services.
Yes, could you answer Honorable Begay's question?
Yes, um, thank you, Chairman So, and members of the, uh, Health Education Human Services Committee. Um, I would just recommend that, um, delegates who would like to sign for the petition, just sign this petition, and, uh, we can leave the thirteenth one there available, uh, in case this June eighth one does not get enough signatures. That way we can, you know, the, the other petition will still be there, but if we, you know, but if we get the thirteen for this, uh, special session on June eighth at nine a.m., then we can always, um, delete the other, um, special session, uh, petition that is originally for June thirteenth, 2022. I hope that answers the question, Chairman So.
Thank you. Uh, Sachee.
Honorable Begay. Uh, yes, uh, Chair, and thank you, uh, Manuel, Manuel for the response, appreciate it, uh, I understand now, thank you.
Committee members, any other... That respect, then I would call for the adjournment at eleven forty-three. Thank you for all the folks on the call. Again, uh, we have many issues, a multitude of concern, and we've got to, I guess, communicate with, uh, our colleagues to see if we can get this petition going. A lot of need out there. And then at one, we have the NABI, uh, work session regarding the, um, ARPA checks, vital records, uh, CIB production, and those items that will be addressed at one point for the balance of the day. Thank you for all the folks on the call, this meeting, this work session is adjourned.